I'm not very telling the question. It's been a span of night. Look, I hear you. Yeah. That's it. See you soon. I didn't know. I don't want to. You know, it's 30 seconds. Yes. Oh, yeah. A few times. So I really, I have to take it for a fact. I get up, I'm, I'm. Sure. I got, I got a bad voice. I'm gonna come in. I, uh.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, don't you go here. Bert goes way too far. And this is my mic.
We got all nice.
Yes.
I can't sit this low. Don't we sweat shit?
I need this right back. What's wrong with this one?
I can't sit there.
Do you think I can sit? Cause I'm asking though.
Bert's next to you.
But yeah, look, it's, it's a gap. This is Bert. I don't know what you're talking about. Now they have their names on it, so. But. Man, nobody knows.
I know, who did that?
No, that's where it's always.
Yeah, I know, I know.
They just go up.
Just extra chair. That's what he is. Yeah, that's right.
You guys like the ready rock and roll? So the clerk gets ready. It, 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 in our best inches. Yeah. Hey, Stan, this is Brooks. I'm waiting on the clerk. Let's have some fun.
You know, I think that's the way to do it. Madam clerk?
Yes, sir.
How you feeling?
Wait a minute. I feel like doing the water too soon.
Put them all on one side or how was it last night? Oh, three, three, three to the right of the mirror.
Now, this is what I, this is what I need to become.
Every day. Well, tell them, keep coming.
Remember when we did the head attacks? How they were so mad at me?
Right. Tell them to keep coming.
They eating off of it. Still eating.
Tell them to keep coming.
Yeah. Yeah. I ain't gonna smile at you, stab you.
Okay.
They done, they done, they done bumped the dog chairs out.
All right, let's rock and roll.
Hey, guys, let's rock and roll.
This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
You need to get quiet.
Ladies and gentlemen. Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, please be quiet. Thank you.
This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Trustee McFadden.
Present.
Trustee Foulter.
Present.
Trustee Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Mayor Rudez.
I'm here, Madam Clerk. Let's please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Yeah, it's a motion to table it, man.
Hey, hey, guys, um, may I have a motion to table the minutes?
So move.
Uh, second.
Move by Brooks, second by Thompson. This is to table the minutes. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Vote aye.
Trustee McFadden.
Vote aye.
Trustee Foulter.
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson.
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams.
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudez.
Vote aye to table the minutes. General public comments.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Well, yeah.
Before.
Go ahead, um, Attorney Burke. Oh, we got a lot of public comments. Go ahead, Attorney.
Before the public comments start, I'd like to make a few comments because I believe the people are here tonight because the board is going to talk about the lawsuit that the Attorney General filed against Aqua.
Can you get the other mic?
He's gonna try to turn the volume up. And please, no yelling out from the audience. Let's hear this. This is very important tonight for everyone.
Uh, nor, normally, the board and the mayor would discuss litigation in closed session away from the public. But I requested, and the mayor agreed, that we do this in the public so the public can hear what the board is going to vote on tonight and what the lawsuit was all about. So I, I, I'm very pleased that there, the residents of University Park are here tonight so that I can explain what this lawsuit was all about and where we are today. If I may, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Please, uh, tell us who you are, sir. And I'm saying.
Uh, I am, uh, Bert Odelson. I'm the village attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
And please, let, please, people, let's not yell out from the audience. Let's have this in order so everybody can get a clear understanding and so everyone can hear. So, Mrs. Morgan, please refrain from yelling out.
So, so I, just to give you a little background, uh, I've been a lawyer for 52 years. We represent, my firm represents, uh, over 30 municipalities, uh, all over Cook and DuPage County, as well as townships, school districts, uh, state government. Uh, we pride ourselves on representing our clients to the fullest extent of the law and even beyond if we can do anything to help the residents of the municipalities and townships we represent. The lawsuit that you're going to hear about tonight was filed almost five years ago in August of 2019. The lawsuit was filed by the State of Illinois Attorney General's Office and the County of Will. Those are the two entities who we call the plaintiffs. They filed the suit against Aqua, Illinois, which is the water provider, as you know, for the residents of University Park. The lawsuit was to bring Aqua into compliance with the federal and state regulations as to how much lead can or cannot be in the water. It was discovered that there was too much lead in the water in university, in a section of University Park. The state brought suit against Aqua. University Park, the village, was not part of that lawsuit and has not been part of that lawsuit for four years until, until, uh, Mayor Rudez was elected and took office in May. Uh, our firm was appointed in May. We found out about this lawsuit in June. The Attorney General's Office called me because they were going to go to a trial against Aqua and Mayor Rudez was going to be one of the witnesses. And I was very shocked to find out that the village of University Park was not part of this lawsuit. It was the State of Illinois, the Attorney General, against Aqua. The only purpose of the lawsuit under the law was to bring Aqua into compliance with the federal and state regulations about the amount of lead that was allowable in water. It was too high in, in many of the homes in University Park. That is the only legal basis of the lawsuit. It's not a lawsuit where people can collect money or where the village can collect money. Not that type of lawsuit. It's a utilities regulation lawsuit. You need to understand that because there's another lawsuit pending filed by Attorney Zimmerman where he represents many of you. That lawsuit is called a class action lawsuit where he is after money for the individual homeowners because of, of the, of the water and the water condition at that time. That's a different lawsuit. That's being litigated a, as we speak. We will, well, I, I, I can't say what the village will or won't do after tonight and after this lawsuit is over in regards to that lawsuit, but I believe even though that class action lawsuit has been going on for over four years, there still may be an opportunity for the village itself to get into that lawsuit. Can't guarantee it, but we, we certainly will try depending on the results tonight. What we have for the board to consider tonight is a consent order negotiated between the people of the State of Illinois, the Attorney General, and Aqua. The consent order was about to be entered by the judge in October of 2023 because University Park was not part of the case until the judge, Judge Anderson, said to the mayor who came to court, "Where, where have you been? Where's University Park? Don't you want a part of this litigation?" Mayor said yes, called me, said we got, try to get involved. I filed a request of the court to allow us to intervene, which means to get into this lawsuit, again, between the Attorney General and Aqua. After a, a, months and filings of briefs back and forth, the judge allowed University Park to become part of this case, but told us, "You can't litigate everything that's been litigated for four years." The, the water has been tested clean for the last two and a half years in the designated area.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
You got, that's not us saying that. That's not us saying that.
Ladies and gentlemen, please allow me to finish speaking. Ma'am, please allow me to finish speaking.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, there's a third case going on right now, I should have mentioned this, called a rate case with the ICC where Aqua has asked to increase the rates of the residents. The University Park is a part of that case and we are fighting Aqua in the IC, before the ICC with expert witnesses to say why the bills should not go up. That's the third case, has nothing to do with this case. This is a, what we call a regulatory case between the State of Illinois and Aqua. We were allowed to come in at the last minute, three days before the judge was gonna sign the papers, much to the unhappiness of the State of Illinois and Aqua, cause the case was over. They had, they had a very, very lengthy, uh, 40-page, oh, sorry, 48-page agreement between the State of Illinois and Aqua that we upset. Uh, we got involved, we had depositions, we had expert testimony. The result is Aqua was going to put up $300,000 in an escrow account and $2,000 per home if a home tested with too much lead and the pipes had to be changed. They were willing to give $300,000 as well as being fined $200,000. The fine money, the $200,000, was to go towards the pot of money to replace people's, uh, pipes if they had to have the pipes replaced. So a total of $500,000 in the pot. Per home was $2,000. So even if you qualified, the most you could get from this pot of money was $2,000.
That's for repairs.
You need to know that this, this is not required by the law in this case. All this case was brought for was to make sure the lead in the water was within the limits of the federal and state governments. But in order to bring closure to the case, the State of Illinois did a very good job in negotiating at least a $500,000 pot of money and $2,000 per home. What, what, what we were able to do, number one, is get into this case at a late date and number two, we were able to get the mon, the, the money from $500,000 to $900,000 and the price per home from $2,000 to $3,500. Plus, we were able to get additional advertisement by way of a billboard, by way of robocalls, by way of, uh, letters to the residents telling them the opportunity for the next 240 days to call Aqua out, to get your water tested. If your water isn't good, you have the additional remedy of, uh, replacing your pipes up to, up to the kitchen sink and out to the wall. We were able to do that. What's going, what's going to happen is the board is going to vote tonight whether to accept that consent order or not. If the board votes not to vote, to, not to take the consent order that we've been able to negotiate up to $900,000 and 3, 3, 3, 500 per home and additional advertisement and many other things in the consent decree, then we get nothing. No, excuse me, please let me finish. The law is clear, we don't, we, the village board, the administration, nor the people of University Park through this case can get a dollar. Only by a consent decree between the defendant, Aqua, the people of the State of Illinois and the village of University Park are we able to accumulate all of this money in a pot that now can be distributed by demonstrated need up to $3,500 a person. We worked.
And the county of Will. Those are the two entities who we call the plaintiffs. They filed the suit against Aqua Illinois, which is the water provider, as you know, for the residents of University Park. The lawsuit was to bring Aqua into compliance with the federal and state regulations as to how much lead can or cannot be in the water. It was discovered that there was too much lead in the water in a section of University Park. The state brought suit against Aqua. University Park, the village, was not part of that lawsuit and has not been part of that lawsuit for four years. Until Mayor Rudez was elected and took office in May. Our firm was appointed in May. We found out about this lawsuit in June. The Attorney General's office called me because they were going to go to a trial against Aqua and Mayor Rudez was going to be one of the witnesses. And I was very shocked to find out that the village of University Park was not part of this lawsuit. It was the state of Illinois, the Attorney General against Aqua. The only purpose of the lawsuit under the law was to bring Aqua into compliance with the federal and state regulations about the amount of lead that was allowable in water. It was too high in many of the homes in University Park. That is the only legal basis of the lawsuit. It's not a lawsuit where people can collect money or where the village can collect money. Not that type of lawsuit. It's a utilities regulation lawsuit. You need to understand that because there's another lawsuit pending, filed by Attorney Zimmerman, where he represents many of you. That lawsuit is called a class action lawsuit, where he is after money for the individual homeowners because of the water and the water condition at that time. That's a different lawsuit. That's being litigated as we speak. We will... Well, I can't say what the village will or won't do after tonight and after this lawsuit is over in regards to that lawsuit. But I believe even though that class action lawsuit has been going on for over four years, there still may be an opportunity for the village itself to get into that lawsuit. Can't guarantee it, but we certainly will try depending on the results tonight. What we have for the board to consider tonight is a consent order negotiated between the people of the state of Illinois, the Attorney General, and Aqua. The consent order was about to be entered by the judge in October of 2023 because University Park was not part of the case. Until the judge, Judge Anderson, said to the mayor who came to court, "Where have you been? Where's University Park? Don't you want a part of this litigation?" Mayor said yes, called me, said we got to try to get involved. I filed a request of the court to allow us to intervene, which means to get into this lawsuit, again, between the Attorney General and Aqua. After months and filings of briefs back and forth, the judge allowed University Park to become part of this case, but told us, "You can't litigate everything that's been litigated for four years." The water has been tested clean for the last two and a half years in the designated area. There's a third case going on right now. I should have mentioned this, called a rate case with the ICC, where Aqua has asked to increase the rates of the residents. The University Park is a part of that case and we are fighting Aqua in the ICC, before the ICC, with expert witnesses to say why the bills should not go up. That's a third case. Has nothing to do with this case. This is what we call a regulatory case between the state of Illinois and Aqua. We were allowed to come in at the last minute, three days before the judge was going to sign the papers, much to the unhappiness of the state of Illinois and Aqua. Because the case was over. They had a very, very lengthy forty-page... Oh, sorry, forty-eight-page agreement between the state of Illinois and Aqua that we upset. We got involved, we had depositions, we had expert testimony. The result is Aqua was going to put up $300,000 in an escrow account and $2,000 per home if a home tested with too much lead and the pipes had to be changed. They were willing to give $300,000 as well as being fined $200,000. The fine money, the $200,000, was to go towards the pot of money to replace people's pipes if they had to have the pipes replaced. So a total of $500,000 in the pot. Per home was $2,000. So even if you qualified, the most you could get from this pot of money was $2,000. You need to know that this is not required by the law in this case. All this case was brought for was to make sure the lead in the water was within the limits of the federal and state governments. But in order to bring closure to the case, the state of Illinois did a very good job in negotiating at least a $500,000 pot of money and $2,000 per home. What we were able to do, number one, is get into this case at a late date. And number two, we were able to get the money from $500,000 to $900,000 and the price per home from $2,000 to $3,500. Plus, we were able to get additional advertisement by way of a billboard, by way of robocalls, by way of letters to the residents telling them the opportunity for the next 240 days to call Aqua out, to get your water tested. If your water isn't good, you have the additional remedy of replacing your pipes up to the kitchen sink and out to the wall. We were able to do that. What's going to happen is the board is going to vote tonight whether to accept that consent order or not. If the board votes not to take the consent order that we've been able to negotiate up to $900,000 and $3,500 per home and additional advertisement and many other things in the consent decree, then we get nothing. No, excuse me, please let me finish. The law is clear. We, the village board, the administration, nor the people of University Park through this case can get a dollar. Only by a consent decree between the defendant Aqua, the people of the state of Illinois, and the village of University Park are we able to accumulate all of this money in a pot that now can be distributed by demonstrated need, up to $3,500 a person. We worked extremely hard on this case in a short period of time. And quite frankly, we couldn't work any harder because the law is not with us on this case. Please understand that. The money to go to the residents is in the class action case that Mr. Zimmerman has. Not this case. So this isn't all or nothing. You know, it's up to the board what they want to do. Judge Anderson got us into separate rooms to negotiate. He got this money for us from Aqua. It is not only a good deal, it's a great deal under the law of this case. Okay, well, those who don't agree... Those who don't agree, you have your opinions. But I am telling you as a lawyer for all these years, the board is in the... There are a lot of misinformation going around the village, including this garbage that was online today. And it's garbage and lies, except for the $900,000. And this is a disservice. I don't know who did it, but it's a disservice to the people of University Park. I don't care who did it. It's a disservice and a lie, a lie. I am telling you. You can say yes, you can say no. I am telling you what the consent decree does. So you can be pleased or not pleased. I am telling you what we did. Nothing short of a miracle. The state of Illinois is mad at me and this board. Aqua is not happy with us for getting involved, as we did, and bringing it...
Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order, Mayor. Point of order. Hey, listen, listen. Point of order, Mayor. I think Bert Odelson, the village attorney... Can y'all hear me? Someone turn my mic up. Turn my mic up. Can you hear me now? Okay. I called for a point of order. I think that the village attorney has explained or jumped in front of what people are trying to understand, what this is all about. We are at public comments. And I think that what we should do is yield the time for the public to move forward with their questions. And when it comes down to the item on the agenda, then I think we can have that discussion further. But I just ask that we please understand that once we finish with public comments and we do go into debate when this comes up, if it does pass the motion to come up, that we have this discussion about what was just stated. Was facts, was fiction?
Excuse me, there's no fiction in what I said. I hope you're not accusing me of that.
Wait, 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 wait.
Not you, not you, bro.
Mr. Mayor, I call for a point of order. If we want to do this, Bert, we can do this now.
Let's do it.
Because you lied already about you coming in at June of 2023. You've been with here, you just sat here and told us that you did this prior to this since January of 2023.
Trustee Brooks, trusty Brooks. Let's not go back and forth. Let's bring some resolve.
That's what I asked.
Let's bring some resolve. Let's add some point of order.
I'm not calling him a liar. I'm not calling him a liar.
So Bert, finish up. And just those bullet points, because people don't know. Go ahead.
So in conclusion, Aqua... I want to be real clear. It's not Aqua that is saying the water is safe. It is the IEP, the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and the state of Illinois. They test the water. Not Aqua, it's the state. And the water has tested safe for over two and a half years. Now, there are some homes that are not. We know that because we did our own independent testing. That's why we have this pot of money to take care of those homes who have the solder connections in their pipes. These aren't lead pipes. These are solder connections in the pipes that the chemicals when Aqua first came out deteriorated the solder that holds the pipes together. And those materials are what got into the water. So in conclusion, let me say, ladies and gentlemen, that we, by our participation, we got an extra $400,000 into the pot and an extra $1,500 per home from $2,000 to $3,500 and other extra things which the trustees know. And I want to thank the mayor, the manager, and the two trustees who came to court and heard what the judge said. So they didn't have to take it from me. They heard what the judge said. And then Judge Anderson helped settle this case with Aqua and got us this extra money. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, that's it. All right, we're going to start with some public comments. Our public comment policy is that there are three minutes per resident to have a conversation or ask their questions at the podium. The board does not have to respond at this time. But if so, they have two weeks to respond if they choose not to respond tonight. Also, that's a total of 30 minutes in totality. So we're going to start with our first public comment. Al Penn.
Just a minute, Mayor. May I be recognized?
Just one second, Mr. Penn. Trustee? Can we have a little quiet, please?
Can everybody hear me, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the regular rules and extend the public comment section. These people live here, I live here, and they are concerned about it.
I second that motion.
What she asked for is to extend the public comments because we're all concerned about everyone's comments. So we want to be as ears open as much as possible. So there was a motion by trustee Thompson, a second by trustee Brooks. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk? You need a second? No, trustee Thompson. Oh, she needs a second, not a second.
That was my being. I second that motion to suspend the rules.
No, that's not the second she's talking about. She needs a second to catch up with something on the camera. Yeah, yeah.
Is what I heard. Trustee Thompson said one thing. When the mayor repeated it, he said a different word. You were asking to suspend the rules. The rules, uh, that's what I...
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right. We really cut my roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee McFadden. Trustee Thompson.
Both sides.
Trustee Falcher.
Both sides.
Trustee Willie. Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Mayor Rudez.
Oh, both sides, both sides.
Good evening, residents. I don't know if... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Al Penn. They can't hear me. They can turn it up. Yeah. My name is Al Penn. I am a former resident, but I'm a taxpayer because I still own my property here in University Park. The exchange that you just saw between Attorney Odelson and trustee Brooks is one that you all should take note and really look at because this is how the village gets stolen by white face. Okay? Second of all, the fact is that I'm declaring myself an enemy to the village tonight. And the reason why I'm declaring myself an enemy to the village of University Park is that we don't have any financials. We have five years of no audits. We have five years of no TIF reports. I came here two years ago, Mayor Rudez, and you told me that you had your audits and I asked you to have an audit hearing. You didn't do it. You lied to me. And you lied to the village, and you're still lying to the village. Today, you just filed an AFR with the State Controller's Office for one year for the year of 2020. So folks, do you understand without any audits, you can't set a budget? So if you've been setting budgets for the last four years, your board, your mayor, has been lying to you. Number two, the fact that, you know, this MFT money should be a red flag that they're trying to get because why did they wait so long to file for MFT money? Obviously, they don't have money and there's a problem with the budget. The other thing that I'm dealing with is that there are no records from the golf course. People called me all week because I was instrumental in terms of getting this golf course started, you know, back in 2006. We floated a bond. But obviously, because of the mismanagement of the last several years, there's been issues. I suffered raised issues with the board two years ago. And let me tell you, for four years at $70,000 a month, $840,000, $140,000 a year, there's no records, none. So where's the money, Mr. Rudez? You selected Ms. Coffey. You selected her to manage that golf course. You with your friend, Mr. Estes. That's his girlfriend. So where's the money? Plus, there's $16,000, $16,000 of golf equipment that's missing. Where is it? Why didn't you call the state's attorney? Why didn't you call the police? You didn't do it. Finally, let me say this. Let me say this. And this is important. Y'all need to hear this. What you have here in University Park is the evil twin was going on in Dalton, Illinois. The same people who are perpetrating problems in Dalton, Illinois, are here in University Park. We can't get a budget done. But the person who's in Dalton is here to do a budget? Why is that? It's conflict of interest with that person. You know what I'm talking about. And let me say this. I'm here to make a whole lot of people's nights very restless. Let me give you some full disclosure. And you already know this, Mr. Rudez. The person who's conducting the investigation in Dalton is my friend. Lori Lightfoot is my friend. I'm a former trustee and I know how this stuff is supposed to go. I am a doomsday bomb for the folks who are complicit with this. I have a stick of dynamite in one hand and I have a match in the other. Keep playing. Because, because, let me tell you. I talked to her today and told her what's going on. Five years of no audits, four years of no AFRs, five years of no TIF reports, no accountability at the golf course for four years, no reports, no financials, no, nothing. And here's the thing. She told me to use her name as a hammer if I have to do so. I will bring her out and set her in front of you and the village. Don't test me because I'll do it. So here's the best way for you to really... No, 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 let me finish. Here's the best way for you... Here's the best way for you to comply. Set a date on the calendar in terms of all these AFRs, all these audits are going to be done, all these TIF reports are going to be done, and have an audit hearing about the state of the finances for the village. You've gone a whole turn and not really been upfront, honest, clear, transparent about the problems financially to the village.
Mr. Penn, you have three minutes left.
I know, I got three minutes. You've got my tax money, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You have four years of my tax money. Sir, don't bother. Don't bother because my tax dollars pay your salary. If you want to throw me out, throw me out. If you want to arrest me, arrest me. If you want to arrest me, arrest me. Yeah, I know, right, right. You know, you know, Joe, you succeeded me.
All right, well, we've got other people out.
I understand. But I want to set the tone. I hope you sleep well tonight because guess what? Morning is coming, and morning is coming with an explosion. Already know too much. Already know who the people are in this village. They're well documented. One of them is underneath the subpoena in Dalton. Don't test me, Joe. Don't test me, trustees who are going along with this. You must be accountable to those people, not to him. Not to him. And let me tell you, village manager, I met you a couple of years ago. You're a very nice person. But I told you then, and I'm going to tell you now, don't get caught up because the people want to hear the truth. The people just want honesty and the truth. That's all they want. It's not worth the money you're getting. It's not worth the title that you have. I've owned my property for years out here. I built it from scratch. But I'd be damned if I'm going to watch my pocket being picked by folks like Mr. Odelson, other folks that are tied to Dalton.
Excuse me?
Yes. How can you set up and represent a village like Dalton for transparency and then you don't recognize these folks?
Do you know who hired Lori Lightfoot?
Yeah, I know who hired Lori Lightfoot.
Yeah, who?
The village did. No, 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 no. They did it by vote. You didn't hire her.
Go back with this.
You didn't hire her. So how can you sit here for transparency for them and no transparency for these folks?
Sir, these people want to speak. You're about 10 minutes in.
Yeah, I know, it's too hot for you. I hope you don't sleep at night either.
You're making a political speech here.
I hope you don't sleep at night, too. Guess what? I have given sweat, tears, effort, and everything else in terms of representing the village. I've represented them as a trustee for two years. I've represented them in terms of the fight for the airport, and I represent the fight for right here. And the water situation should never be like this. The water situation should be public to the people. It shouldn't be coming with a decision on high. You're not communicating with these people over time. It's wrong-headed. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Because I got to... You know, I just want to make some comments to Mr. Penn. It's unfortunate that he feels that way. No one is lying, no one's deceiving the people. We are here...
Good evening.
All right, is this Ms. Dorr?
No, this is Melinda Wilson.
Okay, Ms. Wilson, I got to claw that door next.
Claw that?
Well, Ms. Wilson, did you sign in for comments?
I did, and I didn't know I had to sign in for a comment.
You're at the podium, you're at the podium. Then we let Ms. Dorr go next.
Okay. So my thing is about the board. I don't have any credentials of being anybody but a resident of University Park. I have been a resident here for three years and I've been having...
We're, we're gonna move on because we're here about a water situation. Can we please quiet the room down? Oh, okay. Let, let's, let's resign, let's get some calm in the room. It's important about this water situation. We need to hear from the people, not this outlandish stuff. Come on, young lady.
When I, um, I moved out into University Park in 2021...
One second. Please, there's a young lady at the podium. Give her the same courtesy as you gave everyone else.
I moved out into University Park in 2021. Uh, I had no idea that the water was what it is. So I've been having some issues with the water. Um, but my understanding from you is that they were gonna decide whether the pipes were good. I don't know if the pipes in my home are any good because I'm having so much water backup in my house. I called the village. The village told me to call Aqua. I called Aqua. Aqua said it was my responsibility, and I don't even, I don't, I can't even begin to grasp, um, what to do with this water situation. My yard is flooded. Uh, everything is just happening with this water in, in, in University Park. Had I known, I would've skipped this village. But I'm here now, and I, and I can't afford to sell my home. I wouldn't sell it to anybody with all the, uh, issues that I'm having with this water, this plumbing, uh, thing that's going on with the village. So I wanna know, how do I find out if my pipes will qualify to see if they're part of the rusted pipes? Because I just can't even imagine that, imagine that I'm getting all of this water, um, when it rains and things like that into my home and it's not a pipe situation. And this has been happening since I moved in. This is, this isn't just happened last week's rain. This happens every rain. I've called the plumber. I cannot afford to put the plumber on my payroll. I don't have it like that, and it's expensive. The, uh, keep calling the plumber to come out and take care of this thing, and then for Aqua to come. Aqua came last week and they told, I told them I wanted my water tested, and they didn't say anything, but they sent somebody out to flush their sewage, and they said it wasn't them. I don't know. So whether they flushed it or not, I don't know. Whether the pipes are any good, I don't know. So how am I to know whether my home qualifies for these welded-up pipes that aren't any good anymore?
What part of town do you live in?
I'm in, uh, Old Forge Court.
Old Forge, so that's a part of, that's a part, that's a part of the advisory. So you are a part of the lead advisory on Old Forge Court, and we can have them come and test, 'cause they're gonna test from the kitchen sink and see if they, what the, what the levels of lead are, if there are any.
So what about the pipes then? So what if the pipes are, are rusted from, um, just being, you know, wearing tear?
Just age, just age?
Yeah. So are they gonna test the pipes to see if the pipes are clearing?
They're gonna, they're gonna test the quality of your water that's being delivered through the pipes.
Okay.
That's, that's what they're gonna test.
Mayor, may I be recognized? That's my neighbor, great woman. I was there that day. Karen came home. They were trying to rot out whatever's going on in the middle of the street.
Mm-hmm.
And it was so bad, you can actually hear them coming into your house, the sewer, whatever was going on out there. So, um, I do believe those are Aqua lines, Mayor.
All the, all the, listen, for, for the record, the transfer lines, the pumping station, everything that has to do with the water infrastructure belongs to Aqua Water. The village does not own any of the water distribution, pumping stations, transfer line, anything. From the B-box to the houses is what the owner's responsibility is. It sounds like there's a plumbing problem at the main. It sounds like there could be broken up tree roots or anything of that nature, but definitely have your house tested. I encourage everyone to get their home tested. This is important. We want the people to understand, every home might test, might not test negative. Some do, but for those who do, we have a remedy to get those things fixed. So we'll put you on that list and ensure that you get to, get to have the pipes tested.
I definitely appreciate being put on the list. I definitely appreciate this, uh, this water issue, which the village said it's not their responsibility, and Aqua is saying it's not their responsibility. It's my home, so I guess it falls on me. So, right?
Mm-hmm. It's them, Mayor. It's, it's them. It's them. It's in the middle of the street as theirs.
I don't even have a, I, I thought it was the scrubs too. I had them yanked out the first year, the first year I was there, because when that happened, I thought maybe it was root, the roots coming through. So I had all of the scrubs pulled out. My house don't have any scrubs around because I pulled them all out because I'm thinking this is causing the water issue. I've done everything, uh, Mayor, to, uh, eliminate this water backup. I didn't put salt in my water tank. I didn't did everything. And it's just really becoming a little overwhelming. It really is.
Yeah.
Hello? Uh, I'm, it's, uh, we have, this is a program that was... Do you all hear me?
Let's, let's have a little order, please. Little order, little order, please. No, no, remember, we suspended, that, we suspended, we, just, just a point of order, we have suspended the time regulations, so we're gonna give them a little extra time or whatever to hear the conversation. We made a unilateral decision to suspend the, the time regulations and stuff.
But, um, ma'am, the village manager, there is a program that's out there. Maybe if you check with the village manager for... Is that the AWRS service line?
No, it's a different program.
List, that...
So this is a program that we put together, and we're almost done. I actually just got the pamphlets today. Um, so you'll be getting something in the mail shortly, and we're gonna have a workshop. Uh, there's a couple of things I'm gonna address later, but this, uh, we're putting this together, but I can give you this now. I'd like to give you my card with my cell phone because there's a couple possible different options for you. So if you can call me on my cell, um, tomorrow, I can help you out a little bit, okay?
I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Address in private. All right, thank you. Ms. Claudette Dur? Yeah. Claudette Dur.
What, Dur?
Yes, D U R R.
Yes. Okay. Basically, what I had to say, the lawyer has, I'm sorry. Basically, what I had to say, the lawyer has already talked about, about the increase in the, uh, amount for the, the homeowners to pay. I'm not a homeowner, but I do believe that you guys are forgetting the senior citizens who live in this building right down here. We don't get water. You claim our water is good. All the water is still flowing through the same pipes. Well, we're just forgotten. We're just forgotten people that live in a tall building, sitting down on the, in the middle of, excuse me, I'd like to say something that I shouldn't have said. Uh...
Take your time, Ms. Dur.
Sitting in the middle of nowhere. So what about the people who live in the building? We, we not included in, in, uh, any of this, um, uh, discussion? It's, I, I appreciate the homeowners. I love the homeowners. And I'm here trying to support them. Ooh, Lord, I'm gonna get loud. Uh, but still, what about the people in the building?
If I'm not mistaken, I just don't think that Thornwood Mall is in the water advisory. Do people from your building go over to our...
We have to buy water.
You have to, no, do you, are you able to go pick it up at the distribution center?
No, no.
So you, you guys aren't in the lead advisory?
No. We have to go buy our own water.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's why, Mrs. Dur, because they, they, they state that your water is, according to the I E P A, is, is, is clean.
You know, how can it be if pipes going through the same pipes?
I understand because I've got the same questions myself, 'cause I've been a longtime resident, but it's hard for me to sit there and tell you something different when the U S E P A and I E P A are stating the scientists that do the tests and who deal with the water regulations.
Do you know how many people die in our building?
Yeah, I can imagine.
They're dying up in our building, and we find them two or three days later. We don't know if they're dying from the water or dying 'cause they only, and then fell out and died.
I don't think they're dying from the water.
But yet, still, we not getting no help over here. Somebody gotta help us, 'cause otherwise, I don't know. Let me go sit down for a minute.
Pam Harper?
Good evening, Ms. Harper. I have, um...
Pam Harper.
It, um, I have a, like a comment. Um, the E P A, with the E P A recommendation, 47, $4,700 per household to replace your, uh, pipes, that's, it's, it's way from $5.62. So what are they, what, 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 what is Aqua gonna do about the remainder money that, that these people need to, to re, I'm not a homeowner either. I live in the building.
But that's okay. It's all right.
I'm saying, what is, what is gonna, where is this, what is Aqua gonna do to make up the $4,700 these people need? It's not gonna do it with the $5.62 they, they trying to give. That's not gonna work. They're not gonna be able to do it.
I'm kinda confused, I'm kinda confused about the $4,700.
Okay. The E P A recommends that it, for 47, it's $4,700 to replace the soldered pipes.
Oh, so, so the, the...
Per household.
The, the pipes that you're speaking of are in the infrastructure? Oh, you, okay.
Ma'am, if you're getting it from this, this is not true. This is absolutely not true. We had, we, the village, had independent plumbers go out and, and, uh...
Okay, so how much do it cost?
It, it depends on, on the house, and how much has to be replaced, how much pipe, because it's not...
Okay, so I do know it's gonna be more than $5.62, or $3.35, whatever y'all was gonna get, they was gonna give. It's gonna be more than that. So that's what I'm asking. Where are they gonna get, where are these people gonna get the rest of the money from? The difference.
I, 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 I understand. I understand.
Yeah.
Well, accord, accord, according to our persons who came out there to testing, it's the average price on, 'cause this, it's not replacing the pipes in the ground. It's replacing only the, where the pipes coming in and under the kitchen sink. So the average estimate is between $2,000 and $3,500.
But it's still not three-something.
Depending on the house.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. It's still a lot of excess of money that they gonna need to finish it. That's what I'm asking. What is Aqua, what is Aqua gonna do for the rest of the money they need? It's, it's, it's just not, that $3.35 or whatever is not enough.
Okay, it's 35, it's 35, it's 35, it's 3, it's 3, it's 3, 500 is what you're talking about here.
Whatever it is.
Okay.
But everybody's not gonna get it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, well, okay. Pearl Montgomery? Pearl, Pearl Montgomery?
I'm Lakeisha Montgomery. I'm speaking on the behalf of my mother.
Okay.
Okay. So I've grown up here. I have an issue with the water, with the rates going up. Why is Aqua raising the rates when they've caused so many problems? That's not helping the residents here at all, okay? In regards to the $3,500 to fix pipes, a lot of us can do the kitchen sink pipes ourself. I can do that myself. That's not a problem. It goes deeper than that, a lot deeper than that, okay? So in regards to Aqua giving us water, that is still not helping the residents, okay? You have multi-families in these homes. What are they doing? The water that Aqua supplies, they're running out within, what, a week? That water's not doing anything, and then we're still going out of our way buying mu, buying water out of our pocket. Now, you spoke about the plumbers coming out. My mother lives in a home. She owns her home. What plumber has come out?
No, 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 that's after...
I'm letting you know.
Okay.
No one has come. She has been part of the group to have the water tested. We've had the pipes tested. I'm letting you know, again, these are issues the residents have. Now, you're an attorney. Again, I'm not criticizing you. We hear what you are saying. I understand what you are saying. My background is law. But again, you are not a resident here of University Park. You do not know what we're going through. I understand you are relaying the message from the courts, but again, those courts do not live here. They don't know what we're going through. What are the other... What are the other, um, how can I say this? Um... I was trying not to go there. Um, what are the other areas? What are that, what's that amount that they're getting? The townships? Because if we're just coming in on this at the very tail end of this, that means the other, the other suburban areas who have had to deal with Aqua, they're getting a much larger pie, like, larger slice of that pie that we're getting. Because you stated, we came in at the tail end of this lawsuit. We're not getting much money.
The lawsuit's only, only concerns University Park. No one else.
But you stated with the state of Illinois. If this is with the state of Illinois, that means with Aqua, and I have seen this along with other residents on the news, that other suburban municipalities are dealing with issues like this.
Not with Aqua.
Because we're getting that little small slice of the pie. It's like, we're that stepchild that's stuck in the corner.
There, there's no pie. What you're seeing in the news is, is federal and county funding for Chicago and some of the suburbs to replace lead pipes, right from the federal government. Has nothing to do with what we're here for tonight. Nothing.
That is still pertaining to Aqua. That is still pertaining to us.
Has nothing to do with this lawsuit. Zero.
So Keisha, you, you, what you're saying is that this thing was about compliance because Aqua didn't perform the right acts when they brought in the new water system. So, so the thing that Aqua was, should have done when they were bringing the new water system is that they should have taken a piece of the existing pipe, taken it into the laboratory, tested it in the laboratory to see what the effects of the chemicals would be in the laboratory before they implemented into the full system. Unfortunately, they didn't do that, and they did computer-generated testing, and that's how the lawsuit originated because it's about compliance, 'cause they weren't compliant with the law on the procedure, on how they're supposed to test, on how the water's supposed to be being brought in. You know, I was kinda surprised myself as well, because I've been here a long time, and I was feeding my grandkids Similac and everything else. And, you know, it only, it, it is, it seems like it only affects the homes that were built between 1973, 87, or, or 88.
I understand what you're saying, but again, you just cannot go by the houses that were built within that time. This is a village.
Yeah, yeah.
This water supply, as you have just stated, is pertaining to Aqua. All these pipes, water that are, that's going to the Thornwood house, that comes from Aqua.
I know, but it's, see, when they bring that stuff in, and I'm, and I'm not an advocate for them. I never liked them when I was a trustee. I'm a strong advocate for Lake Michigan water. We, listen, we all know what the problem is. I feel like there's a predatory company who understands the value of this land in University Park. They will make it, and they own a sewer system, the transfer lines. It's predatory. We don't have any say-so. We know what the problem is. It wasn't my decision to bring in the nastiest water in the state or to, from the Kankakee River from the start. So we don't, we know what the problem is. What we're looking to do is to look for new sources. We've already started that venture. We probably captured about $10 million right now in grant funding. We're looking to get new infrastructure money, bring in a new source of water from Lake Michigan. It's a lit, it's a lengthy process, but, but, but the process has started. So continue to say what they're not doing. They're not gonna change who they are. What we have to do is ensure that our water is in compliant, safe to drink, and in the meantime, we're gonna bring in our own water source. That's the only remedy, because they're not gonna change. They want this land bad. And I understand your frustration. And I understand your frustration, I'm as frustrated as well, too.
Now, I'm, I'm gonna state how long I have been here, before Aqua, we were in well water.
We should've stayed there.
That well water was a lot safer than this Aqua water.
Yes, it was, it was. And you know, I, I just got a question, was there a public hearing or anything of this nature, when the village decided to bring in water from the Kankakee River?
We were forgotten. That's the whole thing, that's why I say, we were forgotten.
I wasn't in the office then, I just wanted to know, because it just locked up, and we got, yeah. Yeah, and they, and they bypassed another community. So we know that it's predatory, because soon as we move and vacate our property, this land would be full of wealth and everything, and we'll be displaced, and there'll be very, very good community to live in, we can't fall for that and let them chase us out the community.
Um, I just have a question, off this topic of Aqua, when is the next village hall meeting?
Uh, in July. We have a committee meeting on every second and fourth Tuesday, and this, we're on a summer schedule now, so we only have one meeting in the month of July.
Which is open to the public.
It is, absolutely. And we have a committee meeting that's every second Sun, uh, not Sunday, every second or Tuesday. And it's, it's open to the public, and that's where we discuss a lot of items and things like that, and it's general dialogues, alright?
Just letting you know, I have a lot to say.
That's alright, that's good, because we, we need, we need to hear. But you know, we need, we know what the problem is, let's come up with some resolutions, and I'm with you, Ms. Keisha, been knowing you for a long time.
Mayor, could I be recognized?
Yeah, yes, trustee.
I just wanted to say to you, thanks first for coming out. Under our former mayor, there were a lot of complaints about the well water, people were saying their clothes were coming out dingy, it had an egg-like smell, so she conducted workshops in this very room with Aqua, we had a president, Craig Blanchard, we had Melissa Calhoun, who worked with him, they did the workshops. Now, when they did that, and they changed the well water to the Kankakee River, they put ortho phosphate in this water. Well, in the beginning, everybody was saying how wonderful the water was, even Ms. Millie was saying she could drink the coffee now, without having to worry about it. So, we all were able, we all thought the water was good. Around two thousand eighteen, we discovered, well, they found out the water wasn't as good as we thought, that that chemical they put in it was stripping our pipes, and that lead was coming into our households. So that was the start of it. And we didn't find out till, what, nine months later, that we have been consuming this water, which had lead in it? And I know there's a lot of people that have since passed away, had illnesses, all kinds of sickness, and now I'm getting complaints from neighbors, because even though we're getting bottled water, it's heavy, they can't lift it, even if it's being delivered, I got friends and neighbors that's saying their shoulders, their backs, it's awful.
I totally understand that, my neighbor, who was in her eighties, there are times when she is unable to do it, or her daughter, I'm doing it for her, I totally understand. I totally refuse to have this lady, my mother, lift anything, okay, that's over a certain weight, so, no, I totally understand what you're saying.
Right.
But again, yes, I know the previous, yeah, board and everything, I've been here long enough to know quite a bit, okay?
And it's not throwing, you know, stones at them. They were trying to figure out a way to better our water, because there were so many complaints, I know, I have five daughters, and at that time, the water smelled awful. We got a cooler, we had to do what we had to do, because I was not gonna let my babies drink that water.
I've been brought up totally...
And here we are today.
I've been brought up totally old school, family from the south, I've always known my family to boil water.
Oh.
From the very beginning, they have always boiled water, regardless, and that's from living, even living in the city. So, yes, I understand what you're saying, I, I totally do, and I understand that they were, at the time, looking out for the village.
Right.
By trying to bring in clean water, but again, this is worse than the well water, I honestly and truly prefer taking my chances with the well water.
If I had a chance to go back to it, I probably would too, because this Aqua water that we're receiving now is terrible.
Yes, and I can't understand why they're constantly going up on rates.
Alright, Keisha.
And again, I have asked people to fill out the, the forms, to call the ICC, to complain, one day I called, and I asked them, how many people from University Park have filed a complaint, only thirty-two people. Only thirty-two people, but we made all this noise, but only thirty-two people, well, at that time, that's about a year ago, and they told me about thirty-two people.
Again, I can tell you, they've lied to you.
Well, they may have, but that's unfortunate, and we need to continue to fill out those forms, we need to have a ton of them everywhere in this village, at the library and anywhere else, because that's the only way we're gonna get the rates down.
Yeah, uh, Pearl, Pearl Montgomery, I don't, I don't even think we got forty that signed up, that was just Miss Montgomery, Reverend Justin?
Good evening, my name is Reverend Justin, I serve as Associate Pastor for Justice and Community Engagement at First Baptist Church of University Park, let me first, uh, thank you so much for bringing such wonderful attention to the flyer that we created, which is in fact truth. I'll start with this. I'll start with this. Our foyer revealed emails that showed that in two thousand nineteen, the village did not have access to their franchise agreement with Aqua Illinois. Then, in twenty twenty-three, four years later, when asked for it again, the village still did not have access to it. What is this administration's plan to exercise access to franchise agreement and make it publicly accessible? And second, Mr. Mayor, will you allow for the creation of a special community-led water crisis committee focused on ensuring transparency and accountability with both Aqua and the village for any future agreements and dealings?
Absolutely, Justin.
That's a yes?
Yes.
On record, y'all. He said he's gonna create a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, Ju...
No, Reverend, Reverend Justin.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you repeat the name of this committee that you...
A special, uh, I'll, I'll give it to you verbatim, it is...
Or could you email it to me?
I sure can.
Thanks.
But just, just for, so the people can hear it again, it's a special community-led water crisis committee, community-led water crisis community and committee, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and also, at First Baptist, when we were having those water meetings, Pastor Reginald Williams did set up committees, and he had about five or six, which you were allowed to sign up for, myself, Deborah Taylor, we signed up for the communication one, he had different ones, now, why those meetings stopped going forward, I don't know, but it was a... Okay, right, but I'm just saying, that was on track, the way we were doing it, yeah.
We're good with that. Bernie Giddings? No, she's here, alright.
My question and comment...
And Ms. Giddings, that, that microphone.
If you were to give the maximum amount of three thousand and five hundred dollars per household, according to the settlement, that would only cover two hundred and fifty-seven homes, out of one thousand and six hundred homes. If these two hundred and fifty-seven homes take advantage of the three thousand and five hundred dollars maximum, what is the village plan to ensure the other one thousand three hundred and forty-three have sufficient fund to address their lead issue? And I am concerned, because I have a home, and I might be left out.
What, what do you mean, Ms. Giddings, left out?
I might not, there might not be any funding for me, yes.
Oh, oh, I see, for testing on your home, for testing on your home, so what do you think about that? Well, we'll have to look and, look at those, um, those numbers, because we wanna make sure that the residents who do need to get repairs, get the repairs done, it's not the best situation, it's not the worst situation, but I know one thing, we couldn't walk away without getting anything from these people.
Okay, I just wanna know.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm concerned about that as well, we wanna ensure that the money is enough to cover all the homes, and we know, all the homes might not test, and then again, they might, we just don't know, it will be independent, third-party testing as well, so we're gonna need you guys' help once, if this thing passes, we're gonna need you guys' help, because we only have X amount of days to get this process to start rolling, so we're gonna need the same involvement as going on tonight, when we start that process, we wanna make sure everybody gets their, their pipes fixed, if there's a problem there. As far as what the villages goes, we haven't had that discussion as yet, and that's something that we could look at and entertain as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Victor? Victor Tillman, Tillman?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, my name is Victor Tillman, I am Deacon Victor Tillman of First Baptist Church. Right now, the agreement is to give a total of nine hundred thousand dollars to University Park residents with soldered pipes. According to Aqua's parent company, Essential Utilities, the company raked in four hundred and ninety-eight point two million dollars in profits in two thousand twenty-three, which means this settlement would be zero point eighteen percent of their total profits, not even making a dent in their yearly profits. If Aqua paid the EPA recommended four thousand seven hundred dollars per lead soldered home, it would cost four point seven million dollars, which would still be only one point five percent of Aqua's total profits. I am here to demand that University Park seek a fair settlement of four point seven million dollars to fully repair all the soldered pipes in the village. Furthermore, Consular, your contention, your contention that that was a great deal, I find to be specious and spurious.
Reverend, Reverend, uh, Reginald Williams?
Good evening, I am Reginald Williams Jr., I am proud pastor of First Baptist Church of University Park. And I'll say right now, whether you're a member or not, I still consider you to be your pastor, also. June fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, was one thousand eight hundred thirty-eight days ago. Eighteen hundred thirty-eight days ago, people were told and given a do-not-consume order in University Park, Illinois. Had this been Highland Park, Illinois, we'd be having a whole different conversation right now. The fact that it has been said that water has been tested clean for the last two years, by whose standards, number one? Number two, until every home is tested clean, it doesn't matter what you all say are legal, because it ain't right. Period. Allowing Aqua to determine the testing area is like trusting the fox to guard the hen house. There are plenty of people in this place tonight who can testify that they still have no good drinking water. We at the church have not been able to baptize since June fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, and the fact that Aqua can decide what is the affected area is and not, is absolutely insulting. To the attorney, the facts on the flyers are true, you are lying. These are not lies, these are based on the information given to us on June eighth, two thousand nineteen, by Mayor Joe, Joe Rudez, when he talked and told us that there was nine hundred thousand dollars for sixteen hundred homes. You've already heard the numbers that have been displayed, because nine hundred thousand between, divided by sixteen hundred homes, amounts to five hundred sixty-two dollars per home, number one, number two, again, if the first two hundred fifty-seven people take advantage of the thirty-five hundred dollars, and I've said this on June eighth, if the first two hundred fifty-seven people of the sixteen hundred homes would be fully cared for with the lead solder, that would be leaving thirteen hundred forty-three homes still with the cost of something they did not cause. We are not approving or excited about nine hundred thousand dollars. That is a drop in the bucket that will turn into smoke before it hits the bottom. I'm concerned that whoever negotiated this deal is too limited in thinking and in scope. And I'll say this, this might not sound like a pastor, this is Reggie talking right now, because it's a damn shame that we allow somebody to come in and tell us what's a good deal, when that wouldn't go down in yours, in your community. I don't care about no legal limit. Slavery was legal, Jim Crow was legal, I don't care about no legal limit, until everybody in this community has clean water, it makes no, don't tell me about no legal limit, until you all make sure that everybody here has clean water. I'll say this, I'll say this, and then I'll close, I have members of my congregation here tonight, you may look at numbers and statistics, I'm looking at faces each and every Sunday. I have members of my congregation tonight, Jean, I think you said something about you don't know who's died, and who's had cancer, who, I have members of my congregation tonight, in one household, all of them got cancer around the same time. All of them. I got members of my congregation, and not just in the congregation, girls, but in our community, who've gotten lead poisoning, and others have had connections between their cancer and the family that has hit them. What's the plan? And I can't talk to Aqua right now, so I'm talking to y'all, I'm talking to y'all, if Aqua was here, I'd have a whole nother conversation. What's the plan to support the children and the elderly, and I know what you said last time, Villa, uh, Ms. Manager, but that was, that did not suffice, because we have to develop a plan to support children and elderly who are exposed to lead in the water that has affected their health, elevated blood, elevated levels of blood, families that got cancer, all of this type of stuff, we gotta figure out something, because if we don't get a grant, because we haven't had audits in five years. Right? What is the plan to affect folks and to positively help cure folks for something they did not cause? Saying that you can, and I, and I hear you, my sister, you could, you could fix your own pipes, I get it, you shouldn't have to. We need a plan, y'all, 'cause this is, this is absolute, if this was Highland Park, with folks looking like you, this would not be going on. If there's a response, I'll wait.
First of all, this is now a public debate, it's public comment, and then we'll answer your questions, I'm not...
I haven't debated anything, I made a statement.
Thank you, thank you.
If there's any response, or anything, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the mayor.
Hey Reggie, you know, I look at it like this, what if we go into the courtroom and we come out with zero from Aqua, because this negotiation went on between Attorney General and Aqua without any... Because this negotiation went on between Attorney General and Aqua without any opportunity for, we had no idea about the negotiations that were going on.
How do we not have an idea about negotiations, Joe?
Listen, listen, I'm just telling you, Aqua, we were preparing to go to trial, we were preparing to go to trial, I think you remember that. Before you know it, there's, I get a phone call, there's a consent decree, the Attorney
Hey, 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 come on, y'all, come on, y'all, come on, hey, 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 hey.
The Attorney General and Aqua had negotiations without anyone knowing about it and came up with this agreement. We did not participate in anything. They came up, they, those, this is... Listen, listen, we need to be quiet so we could all hear and get understanding. This is not anything that we participated in. Those numbers with the two thousand dollars and all that stuff, we had no say-so in our whatsoever. To the Honorable Judge Anderson, he gave us the opportunity to come in because we actually would have been stuck with that until we were able to intervene. We did not have a part in the negotiations, and that's a misperception. And we were preparing, when Mr. Anderson's firm came in, they were preparing us to go to trial. We were getting ready to go to trial with Aqua water. Before you know it, there's a summons and a court date with Attorney General in the courtroom saying that they're ready to enter into a consent decree and called this a matter. We had nothing to do with that until, go ahead.
Go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, yeah, we had nothing to do with that initiative. Actually, we didn't know that was going on, that negotiation period.
How do we not know that that's not going on?
We did not...
How do we not know that that's not going on? And, and when we are made aware of it, how do we not have a better negotiation and do some math on our own end to say nine hundred thousand dollars and five hundred sixty-two dollars per home ain't going to do it?
We, listen, from the beginning, from day one, this happened twenty-five days after I was elected, for the day one, I was always been concerned about an endowment fund because I'm concerned about, say, my little grandbaby's drinking a Similac, no problems now, eight to ten years old, they might have problems. That's a very good concern, but I, and that's something I advocate for. We didn't have a chance to go to the table and lay that down. We've laid that stuff out over four or five years, but we had nothing to do with Aqua and negotiation within Attorney, State's Attorney's Office. Katie Pamper, Katie Pamper took this upon herself. It sounds impossible, we weren't notified when they were having conversations, we weren't notified that they were having this consent decree thing, and everybody's saying, we should have known, but we did not know. They did not notify anybody on this board, our law, our other law firm, or this law firm about the intent going on.
I don't see how that's possible, though.
Well, sir, I'm going to tell you how it's possible.
Hold, hold, let's, let's...
When I made my opening remarks, I made it clear that this lawsuit, and you can come look at the caption of the lawsuit, it's the people of the state of Illinois, Kwame Raoul, Attorney General of the state of Illinois, and James Glasgow, State's Attorney for Will County versus Aqua.
I'm a graduate of Wisconsin Law School, I know what it, I know what it is, so, you don't have to explain to me what the brief is, go ahead.
Sir, thank you. The caption of the lawsuits tells you who is in the case. We were not in the case because, as I tried to explain, it's a regulatory action to regulate the water, nothing to do with money. Sir, you're not listening to me.
I'm listening, I've heard that.
Nothing to do with money at all, nothing.
So I think his question...
When University Park was made aware that they would be a part of the case, which was what, October or whatever, right? And all of these things, there should be somebody who is aware of what negotiations are going on once you become a part of the case, is that correct?
Mayor, Mayor, may I have your...
Yeah, yeah, trustee.
We had an attorney named...
Can't hear you, can't hear you.
We had an attorney who was supposed to be advocating for us between Aqua, the...
No, he knows, yeah, correct.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we had an attorney by the name of Nina Fane, who we paid a lot of money, who was supposed to be advocating for us between the AG, the IEP, and Aqua. Nothing happened, but we just spent a lot of money for nothing. That's what happened. She should have known that we needed to bring somebody else to the table to advocate on our behalf. When I asked her in a public meeting, um, who's our advocate? She said the AG, which meant to me, she was not. So that's truly what happened. Our advocate dropped, our supposed advocate dropped the ball.
I'm going to leave it at this, nine hundred thousand dollars is insulting.
It, it, nine hundred thousand dollars is better than zero.
Nine hundred thousand dollars is insulting. And the fact, and listen, I'm not going to let you get away with this, the fact that you telling black folks just to accept whatever it is we going to get is insulting. Don't you ever do that again.
Don't tell me about black folks, don't tell me, don't tell me, sir, look back at my career, you look at my career.
It's part of your career, you went against Hillary Washington, didn't you? Yeah.
Thanks, Reggie. Arlene Simpson? Now, Mary Smith?
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Good evening, Mayor, trustees. I have a question.
Okay, can we have an order, order? Order in the room. One second, Mrs. Smith, let's have quiet so everyone can hear, because some people want to hear.
I understand that Attorney Olson, is that correct? Has been an attorney for over fifty years. You've worked with multiple town municipal organizations. When this came to your attention, and also the mayor, why didn't you dive in, as you should, to cover, as you want to say, your people? Why didn't you get a committee to cover this? Why didn't you make sure the people were represented? You failed. And I'm going to say this, when there is a failure, it's on your head, Mayor Rudes, because they all are under you. Secondly, you talk about the Illinois EPA. The Illinois EPA has been monitoring Aqua for years. How did they fail in this instance? I'd like to know how they failed.
Who, who, who are you saying, IEP?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't say that, I'm listening.
Because this poison got to our children, it got to our families. You can't undo that. But you can go to Aqua and let them feel the pain that we're feeling. And the only way you're going to do that is in the pocket and not with a little nine or eight thousand dollars, it's not going to work. You have to make them accountable for their actions. And you need to start now. When you realize that there was a lawsuit only covering Will County, you should have been on your toes. You've been in this for fifty-seven years, you know how it works. There should have been no holes or excuses, but we're sitting here today with a village. And I know we have African-Americans, Caucasians, we even have some Asians, but we're sitting here as a village, and we're in trouble. I want you to tell us, outline it, I want to see it on paper. I want to see it on paper. Aqua should have been here today. The Illinois EPA should have been here today. We want to look in their faces and let them feel our pain, our questions, our dissatisfaction. Because what you're shooting at us today is bull, it ain't working, it ain't flying. We've been sitting five years with no information, and now today, no, no, it's unacceptable. It's totally unacceptable. I've been in this village for over thirty-five years. My children,
Me too.
My grandchildren,
Me too.
And I want you to say, I'm angry. You can't shut us up. We're angry. When we get angry, there is no shutting us up or sending us down. I think it's...
Hey, Ms., all right. Mrs. Smith, are you still in communication with them? No? Okay. All right, because I, did you, are you the one who sent me that message earlier regarding some meeting with Aqua this afternoon and their lawyers? Okay, all right, you're welcome. Uh, who signed under Mary Smith must have been a doctor, L.E. Junior? Can you see this name? Gordon? Gordon, Gordon Junior? Is it, no Gordon Junior? Okay. Hey, Doc.
I just want to make one statement. I think that, uh...
Would you please announce yourself?
Okay, my name is Lee Gordon, Jr.
Okay.
Okay. To be honest with you, you guys have really dropped the ball on this. This water problem has been going on for five years, you act like at the last minute, you just found out about the lawsuit. When we first started having problems with the water, all the parties included, with your trustees and our lawyers should have been taking care of this from the beginning. Now, it's looked like you just giving us something to, well, basically, something you're just giving us a pacifier. We're not babies.
No.
We have babies, we've raised babies, I've raised great kids and grandkids out here. And what you're offering us is not enough, and it seems like what Aqua's going to do is, whatever they give us, they're going to get it red back when they raise the prices of the water. I think that we shouldn't settle for this, we need to go back to the board, express, explain to them that you guys made a great mistake in your paperwork, and we need to renegotiate the whole thing all over again.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gordon. Uh, Wright, Tyrone Wright, or Little? Uh, Yvonne Wright, maybe? Marcia Hall? Janelle? Gooseby? Jamila Gooseby? What's your name?
Well, I actually came in, I didn't know I was supposed to sign up to talk, can everybody hear me? Okay, let me move a little closer.
Before you start, what's your name for the record?
For the record, my name is Deirdre Myers, that is D-E-I-D-R-E, last name M-E-Y-E-R-S.
Thank you, Mrs.
Now, I have grown up out here, I bought my house out here, and I've been a resident for fourteen years, and I am a little appalled that I paid over seven thousand dollars for my taxes. Now, here's my thing to you, I understand nine hundred thousand dollars is better than zero, but I am not placated by it. Here's the thing, why were you not aware of this lawsuit? In 2022, I received paperwork for a lawsuit, I filed that paperwork with Amarni Fredrickson, and I know she's no longer there. So how was it that none of you were aware of this Kwame Raoul lawsuit that they had on the news? Anybody else? Anybody else? And my thing is this, okay, so yes, you were late to the party with this lawsuit.
No, there was a lawyer.
I'm talking, you had your turn, okay? But, okay, I'll give you that you were late to the party, and this is what they're offering, which again, is a drop in the bucket. Why are we not going to the table and demanding our own class action lawsuit? Why is not the village of University Park saying, I'm not settling for this, I am not going to do a disservice to my residents? Because like they said, five hundred dollars is a drop in the bucket. My mother right there bought this house thirty years ago, she had, oh, I'm sorry, forty years ago. Yes, I told you, I was born, I was raised out here. So, again, why aren't you going to the board and saying, I want my own lawsuit? Because this is not appropriate for my residents. Anybody? I'm done.
Katrina Jones? Oh, okay. You done? All right.
Most of y'all know me, my name is Cynthia Hudson. I've been here for thirty-plus years, my mother has been here for thirty-plus years. I agree with everything that they're saying, you all know that everything that they're saying is true and fact. Why is it that University Park, the mayors, the lawyers, the trustees, why is it that you all are not getting busloads of this community, taking it down to Springfield or wherever you need to take it, and so we can demand what we need? It's a joke that Aqua could come to us with these little pennies and think we're going to be satisfied, oh, throw them a bone, they'll go away. No, we're not going away. This problem is not going away, there's no way in blank that we should be in this mess for over five years, and nothing is being done. You know what's being done? Aqua is calling all the shots. Aqua started out with giving everybody cases of the smaller bottles of water, right? Now, then they moved to giving gallon jugs, then they moved to the gallon, well, the gallon jugs with handles. Now they're at gallon jugs with no handles. I'm a senior citizen on disability, my mom is a senior citizen. We can't handle gallon bottles of water with no handles. I'm not Superman, I'm not Superwoman. You think I'm supposed to carry a case of six gallons at a time up a flight of stairs? We live in a condominium on the second floor, there's no way in the world I can get that water to me. I understand that you can get it delivered, but even if they delivered and brought it into my house, I cannot handle the gallon jugs of water with no handles. So why am I, why is my mother and everybody else who's buying the smaller bottles of water, why do we have to come out of our pocket? Why is that anybody telling Aqua, we have senior citizens and people with disabilities who can't handle these gallon jugs? So for them, you need to give them the smaller bottles of water. Why is it that you're steady, you know, they found out that if they leave the water in the sun, that can cause cancer, right? Why isn't that I had to stop by several times with the water sitting in the sun? Nobody's monitoring that. When I approached one of the Aqua supervisors with this problem, she took my name and number, said she was going to give me a call, I'll be dead before I get that call. So, they're not trying to do anything, they're trying to appease us, they're trying to pacify us, but they're not really trying to solve the problems. I've said from the beginning, the only thing that's going to satisfy me is if you change the pipes that's leading into my home and change the pipes that's in my home. That's the only thing that's going to fix this problem, that's the only thing that's going to satisfy me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Felicia Brown? Felicia Brown?
Brown is my maiden name.
Hey, Mrs. Brown, how are you?
Mildred Brown is my maiden name. I am Mildred Morgan.
Let's, Mrs. Brown, let's have some quiet, Mrs. Oh, Mrs. Brown? All right, Mrs. Brown, thank you. Now, Mildred Morgan?
My name is Mildred Morgan, commonly known as Miss Millie. Everything that everybody that has stood here and talked about the water, about this gentleman here that I've never seen before, and of course, Mr. Rudes, is telling the absolute truth. But, I'm not changing the subject, but I have got to get this in because we are all, we all want to be in a safe village. Right there on Sandra Drive, there's a pothole, a sinkhole. It is a sinkhole, just right across from the park, from the children, there is a six-foot hole down there. They had the, they had the horses there, and these horses, if you just look, that some has been moved. I went over there, took pictures. I went over there, took pictures, and we're talking about a big, big hole. And then that sinkhole that's there, that sinkhole is widening and opening up more and more. But even worse, all the traffic now has shifted to the other side, which is causing it to be weak. It's causing it to be weak on that side. So you already have a sinkhole, buses, trucks, everything comes over on that side, and it's starting to slow down. Ms. Scott, you're the village manager here, and the village manager is supposed to, I know you know, supposed to take care of the day-to-day operations. I'm not even asking the mayor, the trustees, I'm bringing this to your attention, because you are supposed to or should know about this. You should ride around and see. Not to mention how right there on Blackhawk and Sandra Drive, you wobble. You wobble. This is the village that we're living in? This is not safe at all, Ms. Scott. It's not safe. The water is a big crisis too, but there's a whole lot of other things that are crises too, and you have got to do better than what you're doing. You got to get out? I'll take you out, I'll ride you, I'll be a chauffeur and, and show you some things, even though Stevie Wonder and Ray Charles can see it. So that's all I want to say about that. Trustees?
Ms. Morgan, I just want to address something real quick. If it wasn't our last board meeting or the board meeting before, we've approved a certain number of streets that are gonna get repaired this summer. Sandra Drive is one of them and Blackhawk. We know about the, we, we, we know about the hump.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, so everybody can hear.
I heard you, I heard you speak about that, uh, mayor. I heard you speak about that, but you're like a three-toed sloth. You're moving slow in your movement. Our children are over there at Craig Park playing. I go up and down Craig Park at least eight times per day. Uh, the children and, uh, the bus, you got the, uh, pace bus that comes through there. You have the school buses that are soon going to be coming down through that way, and you only have just that one lane, while the other lane is sinking. Oh, I'm not talking to you. It's sinking? Joe, give her permission, please, to take care of...
That's out of order, Ms. Millie.
I know it is.
Come on, that's out of order.
That's me. Uh, I'm blunt, but I'm honest. But, you know, handle your business, so that we can maintain being safe.
And, and see, you know what, listen, when you're talking about these streets and these roads, I'm all about the infrastructure. I know about Burnham Drive. We gotta, see, what's never happened before, we've never had a five-year street program or a road pavement program. We've got that going. We know about Burnham Drive. We're gonna address those issues. We know about Blackhawk. We know about the interest at Thornwood Mall. We know about the, because I drive down the same streets everybody else does, the hump on Blackhawk that you go over, the sewer collapse over there on Sandra Drive across the park. We're made, well aware of that. These things are not being neglected. We're going through the process on getting those things done. And you know what, let me just tell you something. And see, they talked about the golf course earlier, and I'm not an advocate, that's what this village has gone wrong at. See, the village shouldn't be buying golf courses from Stark, because that's not a form of government. Let me finish, please. The, the village should not be running town centers, we're not real estate people or developers, and we shouldn't be operating TV stations. We should be concentrating on constituent services to ensure that our infrastructure, our streets are clean and paved, they're striped properly, we have adequate lighting and things of that nature. That's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't have a golf course that the village runs. It's just, it's just not a form of government, and it doesn't go that way.
Mayor, 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 I have got to, I have got to, I have got...
And we can have this dialogue, but you know what?
I have got to say this.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mildred.
You, here, the last couple of, uh, months, you're starting to speak that rhetoric, but you didn't say anything about that, about the golf course. You brought, you, I got the deposition, remember? You brought Ms. Ms. Coffee.
I didn't bring anyone.
Yes, you did.
I'll save my comments.
I got the deposition.
I'll save my comments for afterwards, so we can get some different stuff. But we talked about this water, and if you're finished, let's go on to the next person, because we want to hear what they want to say.
You paid Ms. Coffee. You took care and bought equipment. You was taking care of the, uh, golf course then, so why now?
I've never taken care of it.
Have you done something with the golf course? I'm just asking.
Okay.
You have plans for it?
Mm-hmm. Get it off the...
Because here you, now you're talking about things that the village shouldn't be taking care of, when all along, you've been taking care and doing all sorts of things at the golf course and paying it, bringing all the people and all. You're not right, Joe.
Alright, Mildred, you got your opinion.
I'm hearing every time.
And you know what? This community will always be at a standstill, long as we...
As long as I tell the truth?
No, long as we portray negativity and division, because that gives the opportunity for people to come in.
It's not negativity and division.
There's no truth to what you're saying, though.
It is simply the truth. Didn't you bring, didn't you allow those people to come?
You know, other people are angry because their group wasn't selected, but when that group came, it was a seven to zero vote. It wasn't, it wasn't a contestant. So, that's a problem that we shouldn't have had to vote on, because we shouldn't be in the business of running golf courses. That's a couple administrations ago, that's over and done with, we gotta move forward. The next person, please. You finished, Millie?
Thank you, yes, I'm through.
Alright, thank you. Vivian Covington? She left out. Jimmy Sorrell?
Hello, my name is Vivian Covington, and, um, I would like to say there was a five-year plan. Actually, there was a seven-year plan. It was a comprehensive plan that was supposed to have been renewed in 2019, it did not get happen, and that happened. Uh, we do have a lot of people in the village with this water issue. Uh, my son has cancer, four other people on my block has cancer. Uh, we don't know what's happening, and, um, what was said last time, I think it was an illegal meeting against the Open Meetings Act. But my thing is, I'm glad to see everybody here tonight. I'm so happy that people are listening, and I would not, and I apologize to you pastor, I would never call anything you said garbage. And for, um, a person to say they know something about black people, if you ain't black, you can't be there. But anyway, this was a really thing for the pastor, because when we had the water company before the issues, we met with them. We met, the pastor met with us many times at First Baptist, and I hope that this thing get resolved. I hope that it gets done, but you know what? What goes, as Ms. Mary told me, what goes in the wash will come out in the rinse. And I'm praying for this village where I live, because I'm very passionate for it. And I'm happy, and I hope everybody stay involved. Listen, listen, and action. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Your, your, your name for the record, please? My name is Cia DeBroe, C I A. Last name D E, capital D, R O E. I'm speaking for the younger adults and for all my future elderly's over here. I just want to say, if we all doing this, we, we're doing this, y'all hearing our voices, right? What are we gonna do from today? What's you guys planning today? Like, I want to know, I'm curious, I'm very concerned, because I do have kids, I stayed with my mom, and the water is terrible. It stinks, it smell like sewer A S S. I'm not gonna cuss, because my kids right there. But still, I, I'm just really concerned, and I just want to know if everybody voicing their opinion, are y'all really listening to us? I get it, we all frustrated, I get it, we're venting right now, but I really want to know from everybody in this table, on this table right now, are y'all really hearing us? Because it really hurts us that we still dealing with this after five years, and it's nothing has not changed. Now, I do want to go over back to the other thing, that the apartments, it hurting my feelings that they not homeowners, and they live in the same area as us, and they don't have free water, they don't get free water, that actually hurting my feelings, because that makes me feel like I should just take my free cases of water and drop it off at that apartment over there, because that's not fair. They live right there in our area, that's not cool. And another thing, they, um, Aqua canceled the, the schedule. They said, uh, we only, at first, we was able to pick up our water twice a week with the cases. Now it went down to one a week. To me, and you don't realize how much water you use, okay? Now, I'm gonna bring God in this, because you never know, you know? I'm just saying, we use a lot of water. Now, my kids sometimes forget to not brush their teeth with that water. I'd be like, "Son, please don't brush your teeth." He'd be like, "Mom, my teeth bleeding." I'm like, "Didn't I tell you don't use that water? That's not the water to use." But we use a lot of water, a lot. I cook with that water, we brush our teeth with that water, it's bad enough, I, I'm trying to be a little bougie like y'all. I don't even want to wash my clothes with that water. I don't even want to wash up in it. I'm a woman, I want to take a bath, I want to sit down and relax in the home that I, I am in. I'm not in the city, the city got good water, city of Chicago, and they shooting up everything else, and they, they ain't worrying about us. But we concerned about the little things, water, water, we drink water.
That's a big thing, yes.
That's a big thing, that's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Enjoy y'all day, thank y'all for listening.
Your comments are greatly appreciated. Thank you. Is that it? Okay, let me see, there's a couple of this. Deborah Stroud, Songya Jenkins, you signed into? Alright, Deborah Stroud, Songya Jenkins.
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate that this many residents came out here tonight. I would appreciate tenfold if Aqua had come out tonight. While you all are all sitting there being browbeaten, I need to ask a question. All of you that live in this community, are you satisfied with getting approximate, whatever figure, from that 900,000, times, uh, out of 1,600 households, and what, $562 and some change? Are each of you satisfied with that? Each of you?
I'll tell you, Mrs. Stroud, would you want us to sit up here and walk away with nothing?
No, sir. No, sir. But I'm gonna tell you...
And, and let me, let me just, just a point, I think that a lot of people are misinterpreting some things, because when we talk about...
Correct me.
When we talk about the large amount of homes, you got to remember, like in some of these apartment complexes and multi-units, there's only one main thing that they have to fix, and that's coming into the building that goes out to the other one. So, when you count the 1,600 homes, sometimes there's one system, like in, say for instance, Maple Leaf, that will feed the, the whole, the whole complex. So it wouldn't be in every individual apartment, it would be at the main, where the water comes in, where they would address it, is there. Same with the, the condominiums on Sandra Drive, and it's same with the ones over there in the, um, in, in, in the trustee, uh, in the Vista complex. So anytime that there's a multiple apartments or homes or whatever, there's only one main supply that they will be addressing, so it wouldn't be going to every home individually, if I'm not mistaken. So, when you hear the 1,600 homes, there are X amount of single-family homes, but a lot of these homes are compiled in the apartment complexes and condominium complexes and the areas where they have just one main feed coming into the building. So, go ahead with your comments.
As, as I recall, having been at that board meeting and the town hall meeting, to have heard the figures at that time, and I, I had the understanding of 1,600 households, is that still?
That's, that, that's the figure that they're, that they're stating, yes.
Okay, that being the case, and I know a comment tonight can be addressed two weeks from now. I believe my comment from two board meetings ago was a question, is there a contingency set in place in this settlement for that person that, maybe five years from now? They have medical documentation indicating that the lead water that was ingested from 2019, that so-called has been corrected in the last two and a half years? If in that event, that person that birthed a child finds out 10 years later, when that child is growing their third eye up there, that some monies are being set aside for that individual, where something can be done to assist in their medical bills, as long as it's been medically documented that it was conducive due to lead either being ingested or on their skin, whatever the case may be. I'm asking, is there any type of contingency?
Unfortunately, there is nothing in there.
Why?
And from day one, Aqua refused that. That's why we have to go for the class action lawsuit and attack them at a different angle. There's the Zimmerman lawsuit open, and if things go right, we're gonna open up a lawsuit on behalf of the village. Unfortunately, I've always been a strong advocate, because I'm one of those grandparents that had a grandson born in 19, and I was living with, they were living with us, and I'm making a simulac with the water. I've got the same concern. We've knocked on that door, I want the endowment fund for that same instance, we want a whole lot of different things. The courts aren't hearing that, because the case is only about compliance. These other things, every individual that's on this advisory has the ability to seek a lawsuit on their own, join a class action lawsuit, or even expedite it to the next level, to the federal level and take up the lawsuit. That's when you will get the monetary damages. This thing that's agreed upon tonight is a compliance issue, where we can only kind of, where they're only addressing the homes that actually have the problem. Our clerk here, when this thing, this fiasco happened, I was in the office, first couple of weeks in the office as being mayor, they knocking on my door. Our clerk has had the highest readings in the entire village of points per billion in, in her home, and, and that, that triggered this thing. Unfortunately, unfortunately, a lot of things came out when this scenario happened. I didn't know that there were certain homes in advisory that were being tested before this breaches thing happened, that were being tested all the time because of high levels of lead. I didn't know that the clerk's home before this water breach was being tested twice a week, and I've come to understand, I mean, twice a month, to whatever it is. And there are other homes in the community that we were completely unaware of.
I was one of them.
And you're one of them as, as well. So, when those things happened, we had no idea until they knocked on that door that June 14th, his pastor was saying, and said, "Mr. Mayor, we've got a problem in your system. You've been here 28 days, but we've got lead in your water system. We have to put out a, a boil order, a do not consume order." And it's been going that way ever since. The court case has been a very, very quiet court case, it's been negotiations, it's basically been up to the scientists on, on proving what it is, as trustee Williams stated, about the chemical that they uses, which has now been banned by the U.S. EPA, because it was too harsh and too strong, and stripped all the chemicals, and that's how the, uh, the lead solder that was on the walls got into the system. It's not a perfect situation, but I can't sit here and say this is something I'm pleased with, I'm not, I'm a 30-plus-year resident, five or six grandkids in the community, all in the school districts, advocating for it, uh, multiple properties in, in the community, so I have a huge investment here, and I believe in University Park. And we know we're not happy with Aqua. I wasn't happy when it was consumer water. I think it's not, it's ensuring that we have this best water that we can have and work on getting it out of this system. That's our only resolution. It's a five to eight, five to 10-year program, but it's well worth the investment, and I can say that we have started looking at new infrastructure, looking at what other communities that we can connect to to bring in Lake Michigan water. It piss, it, it irritates me really bad, because we do our best to bring economic development so we can subsidize some of these high real estate taxes, and then Aqua has the water rights. For instance, our Amazon, a 1.2 million square foot facility, they kick us in the tail, but we reward them, because the new Amazon has to have water. It doesn't sit right with that. So we're looking at ways of public utility taxes on those folks, but anything we do, they're gonna come back and, and attack our residents. We're fighting at, at the ICC right now against this rate increase, because it's not just for University Park, it's the whole state of Illinois that the rate increases in.
Well, let me interrupt you, because I did ask at that same board meeting, just like, always hearing... Well, let me interrupt you cuz I did ask at that same board meeting, just like always hearing the phrase, if we were a different community instead of being majority black,
I said it several times.
That, um, we wouldn't be treated this way. And at that same board meeting, I asked, in, in acknowledgement of the northern suburbs that are also affected negative, I asked then, would it be a consideration of this board to contact, research, partner, whatever the case may be with those northern suburbs affected, where it will make a difference for us as opposed to as legislators settling on our behalf because as opposed to us getting zero, we're supposed to get $900,000? And you look at how many residents of this community, period. There are generations in the making that we don't know of yet that may be affected. And again, you're saying there's no contingency at all whatsoever, but has that been done as far as what I suggested to contact those other suburbs?
I'll just tell you, I've contacted some. A lot of people have contacted me. The village of Oakbrook was considering using Aqua water. I had a conversation with their mayor. They bypassed Aqua water moving forward. It's no such thing. These predatory private-owned water companies have their necks on a minority community. The only way to get out of this is to constantly fight and get our own system in there. They control the system. They have the, the rope around our neck. We have no say-so about the, the transfer lines, the pumping station, anything that will be delivering water. The infrastructure is old and dilapidated as it is. I've asked attorneys on several occasions, can we condemn, can we condemn the water rights to take over? We don't wanna condemn the water rights and have the same problem with the old system. We need new infrastructure. And that's why our focus really needs to be at to come up with resolve moving forward.
Unlike, unlike so many residents here tonight, I'm going on my 51st year of residency. I do know what it was like back with the well water where you can put a strainer on top of a glass and the floaties literally were visible to you. I know what it's like where, when you try to wash white clothes, you saw after three or four washings, then those white clothes start getting tannish, getting brownish, getting gray, and eventually it wasn't even worth washing. I stopped wearing the white clothes at a point. Now, at this point where we are now, like the young lady asked, where do we go from here? Cuz I'm getting the tone of, of hearing it over and over. If we don't settle for 900,000, then we get zilch, zero. I don't understand it. I'm sorry. I don't think a lot of people in here understand that. If you could say anything that can help us to understand why we have to accept the $900,000 as opposed to zilch.
Yeah, you, you don't. You don't. As I said in the beginning, there is another lawsuit currently pending that's been pending for four years, a class action on behalf of the residents against Aqua. That lawsuit is seeking money damages for the residents. That is ongoing. And residents can be and are a part of that lawsuit right now. When this is over, we're going to attempt to get into that lawsuit on behalf of the village.
Excuse me, you say we're going to attempt at that time to get into that lawsuit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With the village consider. With the village consider.
As I said, this is an action to regulate, to make the water acceptable under federal and state standards, brought by the state of Illinois against Aqua. It has nothing to do with money. We, you, you all on the board don't get money for this.
No, sir. I, I understand.
You have to understand, this lawsuit is separate.
This is in reference to services is my understanding.
It's what?
Services. In other words, in the event, in that 240-day timeframe, so many households can call and ask for service to be rendered. I understand it's not cash money.
Correct.
That I understand.
The other lawsuit that's currently pending is cash money. This, this lawsuit has nothing to do with cash money. Nothing.
That's understandable. May I ask if the village would consider from today creating possibly as legislators, something that residents can be heard, be a part of, to assist, to assure that Aqua does not increase their rates? Uh, I know Illinois Commerce Commission, because I've been getting signatures for, uh, protesting against Aqua increasing their rates. So, we're talking about the settlement tonight. My question is, can there be legislation put forth where the village can assist the residents to approach Aqua and be a part of the Illinois Commerce Commission to avoid delay, hinder Aqua increasing their rates? Something like a Citizens Utility Board?
We, we are. We, we are actively involved against Aqua, we being the village, and we have partnered with Cub, the Citizens Utility Board. They are our partners and have brought in expert witnesses to testify against Aqua, which they have. They have given evidence saying why Aqua should not be entitled to an increase. The Illinois Commerce Commission determines that. We are in an active fight. That's the third case that's going on right now as we speak. Has nothing to do with this one at all. So, you are being represented by the village against Aqua in the ICC case.
Thank you. Is, was everyone here tonight aware of that? Thank you for, for allowing me to speak. Thank you. Because at least something came out that maybe everybody here to, maybe everybody here tonight was not aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stroud. Songya Jenkins?
Board, mayor, and residents of, uh, the village of Uni, hello, can you hear me? Residents of the village of University Park, I wanna thank you guys truly for coming out. What is the essence of life? I'm looking at these children walk through here and I'm looking and I'm starting to feel a little upset because they've been drinking this dirty water. My dad died a month ago from, you know, suddenly. He lived here 13 years. He died. And I'm wondering, is it because of the water? Because he had a massive heart attack and it was sudden and he wasn't truly sick. I've lost several friends, brain cancer, heart failure, different things like that. And I'm looking at the board and I'm asking them, "You knew that this was coming. Why didn't you set up a, a workshop to discuss this with the residents of the village?" We matter. We've been drinking this water for seven years. Dirty water. It started in 2018. Let the truth be, be told. Let it be told. It started in 2018. Be honest. Be honest and be truthful. Let the truth be told.
Say again? It started?
In 2018. It started in 2018. I've sat on both sides of the bar. I'm looking at these community and I'm saying, "This makes absolutely no sense." So, you come to us tonight telling us, "Well, you know, you could take $900,000 or you don't get anything at all." This should have been discussed with the residents of where we, when you found this out, a workshop should have been done. You've been doing workshops. We have car shows. You go on trips with taxpayers' dollars. You should have made sure that all of these things were discussed with the residents, the parents, the seniors. These are stakeholders in the community that homes are paid for. All they have is taxes. That's it. They're not worried about a mortgage and they don't plan on packing up and going to get another one. So, we're looking at this situation as taxpaying residents and we don't know what to do. It's doggone if we do, doggone if we don't. So, what do we do? We, we are a village, a minority village. If this happened in Olin Park, would this be going on? Would they change all of our, our water infrastructure from the street to the house with no questions asked? Has this board decided to fight, and I mean fight for our well-being? We don't need people on these seats that's not fighting for us and what we need and what our families need. And this is where I'm at with this. Now, I'm, I'm holding each and every last one of you accountable for not informing us that this is what was going on so we can digest this information and get prepared to take these peanuts. That's where I'm at. So, we don't have a choice. Now, we're, our back is against the wall. So, where do we go from here? Where do we go from here? 2018 to 2024 and we're still dealing with this and the president to Aqua? If you see this, Mr. President, I don't know your last name. The last one was Craig Blanchett. I don't know the new one.
David Carter.
David who?
Carter.
David Carter. How dare you not come to this community and address each and every last one of us? And when it was a water crisis in Hawthorne, you got yourself up and you ran to Hawthorne, but you won't come to University Park and we've been dealing with this for seven years.
So, Songya, so, so, Songya, so listen, Aqua wouldn't participate cuz they are very angry that the judge came up with this thing. They have no skin in the game as far as this. They are very upset that this is even moving forward. They didn't wanna come up with any doggone thing. We gotta get the predatory companies out the community. We can keep on talking about the same problem. The resolution is not what people might wanna hear, but the process might be a long journey, but the first steps is taken. We don't need to be controlled by predatory companies in our community, raising the rates when they want to. We don't have any say-so. If you don't even allow them to change the outside meter, they threatening to turn off your water. It's, it's always been a monopoly in this community and most people, I've been here since 90. I've always bought bottled water from the start and only use this Aqua water as a shower.
And I'm gonna say this. I'm gonna say the reason why Aqua probably didn't take this community seriously is because of what the community took from Aqua. And I'm talking about the elected officials getting campaign donations. So, when you start doing those type of things, you less than what you can get from a company that's beating your butt. Are you kidding me?
That's right.
So, why shouldn't, why didn't you think they lowballed us? They lowballed us because we could be sold up the river from our elected officials. So, when we go to these ballot boxes, we need to do our homework. We need to go on detours and see who took money from Aqua Water Company. And then we decide who we gonna vote for. Because a lot of them did a lot of things. They then took money, Christmas toys, all this kind of nonsense. So, we have devalued who we are as people in a community that's struggling with dirty water. So, why wouldn't they give us $900,000 to say this is what they gonna stand for? And that's all we gonna give them and that's all they gonna take. That's what they did to us. And they did it because of the leadership in the community and what they've done over the years and years and years of taking these things from this company and not doing what we need them to do.
Yep. Thank you, Songya. And you know what? And I, and I gotta say that Reginald Williams had this summit and we know which elected officials took money. Uh, one second. We've got.
I'm not on the list there, but I would just like to make a short comment. I just have a short comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Boyd.
Uh, you know, I'm always talking about the newsletter. Uh, this is why the community.
Sarah Boyd.
Sarah Boyd.
Just for the record there.
Okay. That's why the community is not informed. And I know that these good people on the board are intelligent enough to get you the information in a timely manner, but all of this is intentional or it looks like you're just not doing the job that we hired you to do. I mean, you've told me that you're waiting on some trustee to get you to, get there.
Well, it's done. It should be in the mailbox.
Pardon me?
I'll, I'll let them speak to the mail, the newsletter because it's very important to me as well that the residents get the factual truth and as they stayed at the town hall, it should be in the mail now. Residents should be receiving it.
It should be in the mail now?
Yeah.
Well, you told, now we have a situation where we have to wait two weeks to get an answer to our question. So, it's been more than two weeks cuz I.
Yeah, it's always been.
I haven't been to, I, I haven't gotten an answer cuz I haven't been here in about three weeks. Okay. Uh, the other thing I'd like to address, when the money is given, this money is going to be dispersed to people that need it. Who's gonna be dispersing this money?
No, it's not gonna go to the individual people. Go ahead.
This, this money goes into a pot and the people that qualify to have.
In a fun, a pot? What you mean?
A fund, in a fund.
A fun?
And, and the people who qualify, their bills will be paid by.
Who will be dispersing this money?
Aqua through the state of Illinois.
Oh, Aqua will be.
Is there money?
Oh, okay. So, there would have to be some qualification they would have to present in order to get that money, right?
You, you have to qualify.
Okay. Do you know what the qualifications are?
Yes.
What are they?
You, you have to test higher than 15 parts per billion of lead in the water.
And that's it?
That's it.
That's it. So, if they come to your house or my house and they testing, we're above the 15 points per billion, then we're one of those qualifying homes that needs to get that, uh, repair done.
Okay. And you think that is enough money for that particular, $4,000 is enough to repair the pipe and going into a home?
Every home will be different, but this lawsuit from the state of Illinois is not about money.
I understand it's not about money that we're gonna get, that they're gonna disperse to the people that qualify for it.
Correct.
Am I right?
Yes.
Now, I'm just saying, you put, you, you gave us a number of 4,300, I think.
No, I didn't do, give you that number. Someone else mistakenly gave you that number.
Well, 3,000 was less than that.
3,500.
3,500.
Aqua's, Aqua's original proposal was $2,000. It was Aqua's original proposal was $2,000 per home and that was it.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay. Change the conversation a little bit. Uh, the walking paths, I know we have a gentleman that drives around and supposed to be surveying our community and, um, getting things. I don't know who he reports to, the code enforcer. Does he report to your office or whose office does he report to? The gentleman over in building and grounds? To the fire department? The code enforcer reports to you. And if there's a situation that he runs into, what happens then?
He would do a report and then it would come to review it and make action.
Okay, because I, I'm noticing that our walking paths are all grown over. They need to be cleared out. Some over there by the pool, we used to have picnic tables over there. I would like for them to be put back there. They can at least use, you can use the grounds when you're walking out there. It doesn't have to be a lot, but just, we only had two over there. So, that's it. And I think he needs to do a better job of reporting to you of what's going on in the village of properties, how they're being unkept, the grounds, the parks and things like that. And I want to know this hole that, um, the person was speaking about, when is that going to be repaired? Because that's very dangerous. That would be a lawsuit for the village and I don't think we could take another lawsuit. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome. Has everyone had their opportunity to speak that, Miss, yeah, yeah? I see Mrs. Trust, you're next.
My name is, um, Ms. R. I'm not gonna give you my name. Mr. Lawyer, Mr. Attorney Man, do you need proof about this faulty water that Aqua is stating that's clear? Or the Illinois EPA? I have 436 parts per million of lead. Do you need this evidence to take back to the judge to stop any lawsuits going further until they stop this lead problem? And it's not just in the kitchen sink, uh, Mr. Mayor. It's multiple areas. The boss has been to my home last week from Aqua because of the numbers that they got from the testing from my house. Everybody on this trustee board has a job. And then you all need to watch each other's back when it comes to things like this. This is a major problem because you're affecting major residents, okay? The lawyer keeps saying it's not about the money. The money is nothing. We didn't ask for this water to be changed over. Yes, we wanted the water to be fixed or better than the well water, but we don't wanna die. And that's what we're doing. We're dying. We've been up here for five years fighting to try to get this water fixed and rectified. And the only thing we've gotten is a higher bill and dirty water. And here's your proof that you can take back to the, to the judge and let him know. That's it.
Thank, thank you. I got, uh, Pastor Hunt. Oh, Mrs. Trust, then Pastor Hunt. I see, I see him on there, Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Do you need my name? I don't think so.
I don't think so. Okay. I just have a couple of things to say to anybody that's on that board. I didn't hear it from you guys, you trustees. I heard it from you, uh, rude ass. You said that you're not, as long as you have this attitude that you're not responsible for this, that, whatever. When you get elected and accept those positions, you represent the government and the government is responsible for helping the people. If you can't help the people, you're in the wrong place. I'm depending on him to keep me safe. I'm depending on him to rescue me if there's a fire there. You are responsible for the people in this village. Now, I'm gonna take my education, my degrees back if I'm wrong and give them back to the You are responsible when you take that oath. So I don't want to hear that anymore. I really don't. We elected seven people and that's seven people we're supposed to represent. Now, if you dropped the ball about this water, you did it. I dropped the ball about a lot of things, but I don't go around saying that I'm just not responsible for those children that I have. But this Nina Fane, uh, I think that agency is called NRDC or whatever it is, ARDC? You all should have filed a complaint against her. If I look on her record, it's like she got all that tax money? It came from me. Now, every June 1st, I get an attitude. And my attitude, you know what June 1st is? The taxes are due. And I paid mine, every dime of it. And I expect you to protect me and I expect you to help me. Now, I don't know about your leadership because you haven't proved that to me because you didn't file a lawsuit. Now, I said, I got an attitude. How much money is she having? Thousands of dollars? That would help out on my granddaughter's tuition. That's a lot of money. And just walk away. You dropped the ball. Accept it and try to pacify these people. That's all I can say. But I don't want to hear that anymore. My friends who farm, they tell me I can get a lot of money for that hay over there, bale in it at the golf course. And most people in here, there's only a few people been here as long as I have. Now, I'm topping 50 years. Ms. Petter has been here longer than that and we've not seen that, this kind of mess before. This is ridiculous. I know you've done the best you can, but you know, a closed mouth does not get fed. I'm going home, people, because this is enough. This is ridiculous. You dropped the ball. We should have sued them. When my house had called Monaxide in, he showed up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees and everyone who's here today. My name is James Hunt. I'm the senior pastor of New Hope Christian Community Church. Now, that's in Moni, but my mom has lived here for 40 years and my sister is in the audience. She's lived in University Park for 40 years along with my niece and my nephews. And so I just came to represent this family along with the trustees who are sitting right here, some I work with and some who are in the church and many of the people here who I know personally. I've been listening for quite a while. My name wasn't on the list, so thank you for allowing me to speak. And what I'm hearing, I don't know if you're hearing what I'm hearing, there's a sense of moral outrage. There's a sense that we're not being listened to. And I just want to ask all of you here, when is enough enough? I've been to the Metropolitan Planning Council and I've watched the different regions of the Chicagoland area, the north, the south, the west, and the south is always treated like a stepchild. Always a lesser voice. And what I'm hearing today is anger, is outrage. And I'm wondering, do you feel that same outrage that the people are going through? What I heard from trustee Brooks and trustee Jewel about this situation, I knew about it because my mom receives water. It has been for a while. And for this to go on, Pastor Williams said it would never happen in Highland Park. Can I tell you something? It wouldn't happen in Moni. And so when is enough enough? There should be a sense of outrage because this is, I'll call it what it is, this is simply and sheerly injustice and we shouldn't stand for it. I'm a pastor, so I have something I want to share with you. In First Samuel, Second Samuel 23, there's a story about mighty man. And there's this one gentleman, his name is Benaya. And it said that he went down, he chased a lion into a pit on a snowy day. And what I'm telling you, what I want to let you know is that we need to chase that lion, that lion that's trying to kill us. We need to chase that lion into a pit and kill him. It's time for clean water in University Park. We shouldn't have to stand for anything less. I know, Mayor, you love your family, you love your children. We've known each other for a long time, but sometimes enough is enough. These are your people, these are our people and we need to fight for them. We need to go down into that pit on a snowy day, no matter how much snow is falling, no matter how hard it is, no matter how fierce the lion is, and we need to slay that lion. We need clean water in University Park.
Get clean water from Aqua. I think that is it. Are you Melissa Williams? Oh, Deacon Martin, Ms. Martin, you're on here as well.
And can I be recognized too after?
Good afternoon. My name is Wallace Martin. I'm at 713 Wright Road.
Yeah, just pick it up, yeah.
I'm at 713 Wright Road.
Quiet down.
When I first came in, I saw Ralph the Bad. This meeting was gonna be crap. First of all, was disorganized. You have, you have seniors sitting without a seat. It was jam packed in here. Look how the chairs and everything is arranged. In the military, they call it the five Ps, propland, prevent poor performance. Now, I am a disabled veteran, 100%. For awards declaration, I got the second highest award in the military, Civil Star. I spent, I spent two tours in Vietnam. I used to push away dead bodies to get to drink water, put an eye down, tap it in it. My comp was overrun, right? I put dead bodies over me for protection. Band-Aid went down beside me. It's a blessing. Out of 144 people, I'm one of 12 that were left alive. Same thing gonna happen right here is that we have to stick together. We have to make the right decision. Somewhere in the Bible, I read, where there's unity, there's sprints. Now, I'm not complaining about the taxes, right? I don't pay taxes. I don't even buy fish license, I fish it every chance I get. That's one of my benefits. The village is not doing nothing for me, not a damn thing for me. We have a lot of veterans out here that they dying off all because, well, let me put it this way. I go to Heinz VA. I take 23 pills, 23 damn pills a day to stay alive. The doctor asks me, how you doing, Mr. Martin? I say before I, after I took my medication. Now, the point I'm, the point I'm getting to, right? I can't make no decision for the village, but I can vote. You hear what I'm saying? I can vote. I have to get you in office, damn near I can get your ass out of office. Now, two, we have a lot of churches around here. One that don't belong to a church, attend a church of your choice. Please, I'm asking you, please do what you feel is right. God see what you're doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Martin. Steve Johnson? Stephen Johnson? That's the last person. Tonga Garing? Irvin Mitchell? Okay, that concludes our public comment section. That's, I've asked everyone that signed in, had the opportunity to come to the podium. So we really appreciate all of your comments, all of your suggestions, easy decisions that need to be made. And no one likes this situation where we have to deal with a predatory, a predatory company that has their hands around our neck. We know what the problem is. I'm asking for you guys' support on the next chapter in University Park and getting Aqua out of this community and getting in a new water source and not Illinois American, not a private water company. That's the mission that we need to work on collaboratively to make this a better place to live. We're never gonna get what we want from Aqua Water. It's just not in them. Private water companies are in there for only their money. And two private water companies in Illinois is Aqua and Illinois American. We have to get away from those companies. We don't have a contract with Aqua Water or any agreement with them, but they do own our, own the infrastructure and that's the challenge that we have. We can't apply for federal grants that other companies, other municipalities can receive because we can't apply for grants to apply to someone else's property, which is the water system. So that's the situation that we're in. So we're looking for resolutions. We can't continue saying what the problem is. We have to come out of here with a brighter day and a future look moving forward. So that's what we're gonna ask your support on. It's not the best thing, it's not the worst thing, but I always will believe that 50% of something is better than 100% of nothing. And some might not agree, some will agree. But those are, you know, I chose this position and you guys chose me to this position. There are decisions that are gonna have to be made that may be unfavorable to some, but decisions will have to be made. That's just a part of what we do. So we just thank you for this and we thank Judge Anderson for everything that he's done while allowing our council to get into this part of the lawsuit. And it looks like the future we'll be able to get into another part of the lawsuit where we can come to the back and have a meeting and say, now the village is a part of this litigation. Now let's go together as this community. So I thank you again for all of your comments. Nothing's perfect. I'm displeased about it. I'm sure the board members are, but we have to make these decisions to move it forward. And that's, that's all I have to say. Okay, here's the comment, so...
Mayor?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, wait a minute, wait a minute, Madam Clerk. So we're concluding with that, so let me go to the agenda then. You want to make a motion or something?
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to move agenda item F2A. I would like to... I would like to make a motion to move agenda item F2A. I cannot hear you.
Now trustee, go ahead. Is that better?
Yeah, get your mic off.
Go ahead, trustee.
Hello? Can you hear? Okay. I would like to make a motion to move agenda item F2A, motion to approve consent decree and settlement agreement with Attorney General and Aqua up to F1A. Because we have, the residents wants to know before they leave what happens during the vote. So they would like to know the results. I understand, but I have questions for the first. So I motion to move it up.
Motion in the second, on the... You don't know if these mics are on or not. There's a motion and a second. We're gonna do a roll call to see if there's a motion that's gonna be accepted to move this item up one step. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. This vote is to make a motion to move item F2A, which is a motion to approve consent decree and settlement agreement with Attorney General Aqua switching positions with item 1A. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Luke. Just moving it up.
This morning?
Yeah. Trustee McFadden?
Vote aye.
Trustee Falcher?
Vote aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Vote aye.
Trustee Williams?
Vote aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote aye.
Mayor Rudy?
Vote aye to move this item up. Thank you. That motion passes. Now we're gonna move, go to, go to the business. This will now be item F1A instead of item F2A and this is a motion to approve consent decree and settlement agreement with Attorney General and Aqua Water. Is there a motion? Moved by trustee Lewis? Second by McFadden.
I have questions.
Question?
Okay. So Attorney Odison, there were several things you stated when you was doing your, the breakdown of the consent agenda. You stated that there were other items that was being offered. What are those other items? Actually, just break down all of the items.
By the terms of the settlement agreement, Aqua will establish a fund and implement a technical assistance program that's part of the consent decree benefiting those customers within the lead advisory area, which includes roughly 1,600 homes affected by the lead in the drinking water. Within 30 days of entry of the settlement agreement, Aqua will fund a total of $900,000 for the benefit of residential customers in order to pay the cost of remediation of lead solder and/or lead containing fixtures. lead solder and/or lead-containing fixtures. Again, the state and Aqua's previous settlement agreement only require Aqua to fund a total of $500,000. Also, it will notify residents of the technical assistance program. Aqua will be sending informational notices to residential customers in the mail, attached to their water bills, and explaining how effective residents can sign up for and receive the benefits of the program. Aqua will be launching an ad campaign informing residents of the technical assistance program, which includes a billboard in the village of University Park and two additional robocalls. Upon 30 days after entry of the settlement agreement, residents will have 240 days to sign up for the technical assistance program and the activities contained in the assistance program, which includes tap water testing at the kitchen faucet and cost-free remediation of lead solder and/or lead-containing fixtures inside the home if the water tests above the EPA's threshold for lead. If the residents qualify for the cost-free remediation inside their homes, Aqua will connect the eligible homeowner with an Illinois licensed third-party plumber, someone not connected to Aqua, and pay such plumber up to the sum of $3,500 per eligible resident. Residents must sign up for the technical assistance program within the 240-day period in order to receive the benefits. Aqua will then be obligated to fund the remediation costs for eligible residents up to one year following entry into the settlement agreement. Aqua is required to complete all remediation work still in progress even after the one-year termination date. In addition to covering remediation costs for eligible residents, Aqua will also pay a $200,000 civil penalty to the State of Illinois for its actions related to lead and drinking water crisis in University Park. However, this $200,000 may be used for the replacement of solder and lead pipes if there are insufficient funds left from the main settlement. The village will hold a public hearing in July to outline the actions that the village residents can take to participate in the technical assistance program. There are other things within the 40-page consent order that were done before we were involved. Things that the State of Illinois and the Attorney General's office requires Aqua to do to monitor the water, which the Attorney General and the I-